All members are present. Do we have a motion to go into closed session for the items listed on the agenda?
Yes, sir, moved.
Got a motion?
Yes.
Second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed, like so? Thank you. All right.
...
All right, we'll consider ourselves, pardon. All right, we'll consider ourselves back in open session. Thank you so much for your patience. And thank y'all for being here. We appreciate your attendance. I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson, please.
Before we have our moment of silence tonight, I wanted to mention that we lost a student this past week. Messiah Smith was killed in a car accident last week. And we just want to express our heartfelt condolences to her grandmother and to her other family members and friends and teachers and all the people that knew her and loved her. We've heard so many wonderful things about her and many people knew her directly. She was part of our virtual academy that was through Chatham Central. And our heart goes out to the whole community. So if we could just take this opportunity for a moment of silence and reflection, thank you. Thank you.
Let's all stand for our pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. All opposed like sign. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed like sign? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Hello?
Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye. Any opposed like sign? Thank you. All right, Dr. Jackson, Superintendent's announcements, comments, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you. For the sake of time tonight, I am going to leave the power of connection report for the record and allow the, it'll be provided to the public. We'll move forward. We have several recognitions we'd like to get to tonight. Dr. Kelly Battin will come forward now, National Board.
This evening, we held a recognition reception for teachers in Chatham County schools who are recognized by the state of North Carolina for performance bonuses. These are based on the 2022-23 data. They're awarded annually in January. Of note, for third grade through fifth grade reading, teachers can qualify for this bonus if they're in the top 25% of the state and/or the top 25% of the school system. All school systems, therefore, are guaranteed some portion of staff to recognize. It's significant that for Chatham County schools, seven teachers are in the top quarter of the state of North Carolina in third grade reading. Sixteen teachers in Chatham County are in the top quarter for fourth through, through fifth grade reading. Twenty-two Chatham County teachers are in the top 25% in the state for fourth through eighth grade math. And this definitely deserves a moment of applause. In addition, this evening, we celebrated teachers who obtained student scores of three or higher on advanced placement exams, industry-recognized CTE credentials, this is part of our current technical education department, and two of our newest National Board certified teachers. This brings our total to fifty-nine current teachers in Chatham County who have National Board certification. So congratulations to each of these staff members who are recognized this evening.
Leave our next presentation, our middle school cross-country recognition.
Spelling bee.
I'm sorry, spelling bee, sorry, sorry, I missed that spelling bee. I saw Ms. Hester.
She would have given you a load, you'd have been okay, she'd have reminded you.
The look.
Spelling bee kids were just standing around the cross-country without running.
That's right. My apologies.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Amanda Moran, Assistant Superintendent for Academic Services and Instructional Support. This board item is aligned with our strategic plan priority one and five. We're always excited to get to share with you scholastic endeavors of our students. We have quite a few this evening to share with you. I would be remiss if we did not recognize our staff who put these events together. Ms. LaShonda Hester is our executive director for middle grades, and she'll be sharing with you a little bit more about these events. But we would like to also thank her team for their hard work.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as well as Superintendent Jackson. I stand before you to honor two groups of Chatham County school students, our science fair winners, as well as our spelling bee winners. I will first begin with the science fair winners. All of our students are not present, but I will still call their name. And we will actually honor our first place winners. Our annual Chatham County School Science Fair was held on December 5th at Northwood High School. This year, the fair had almost 200 projects, and every school was represented. The total projects in the fair increased from last year. It was a great evening honoring our future scientists as well as engineers. Eighteen projects from our district moved on to our regional fair, which was held on February 17th, which was at East Forsyth High School. Six of those projects are moving on to state, to elementary, to middle, and to high school. The state fair will be held March 23rd at NC State University. At this time, I'd like to honor our first place students. Students, if you would, please come and address the board. And at that point, if you'll exit through this door, and we will take your picture. In our K-2 division, our K-2 overall winner, we have two winners. We have Alex Maropolis from Chatham Grove Elementary, as well as James Crawford from Pittsboro Elementary. In our K-3, our 3-5 division, we have in 3-5 Biological, Gwen Franskowski from Chatham Grove Elementary. In third through fifth Earth and Environmental Science, we have Keaton and Audrey Jett, Chatham Grove. Keaton and Audrey will move on to the state science fair. In three through five Chemistry, we have Claire Palmer of Bennett School. In three through five Engineering and Technology, we have Abigail Lemon, Isabella Williams, and Jack Walker of Perry Harrison. In three through five Physics and Math, we have Luisa Riveros and Catherine Guanapp of Chatham Grove Elementary. And they will move on to the state fair as well. In our six through eight division, in our six through eight Biological A, we have Abigail Brown from Chatham Middle. Also in six through eight Biological B, we have London Bryant of Margaret B Pollard. In six through eight Chemistry, we have Nicholas Triglianis of George Moses Horton. Six through eight Earth and Environmental Science, we have, from Chatham Middle, Reagan Sandell, Kinley Jordan, and Maddie Smith. In six through eight Mathematics, Statistics, Data, from Margaret B Pollard, we have Sam Zewelin, Rhett Bailey, and Aiden Cochrane. In six through eight Physics, we have Finley Doschel from Moncur, and Finley will move on to state. In six through eight Technology, from Moncur School, we have Ben Galbraith, AB Lucas Rodriguez, and Henry Payton. They will also move on to state. In six through eight Engineering, we have Aubrey Honeywell and Peyton Sipe from JS Waters. And that concludes our six through eight division. In our nine through 12 Division, nine through 12 Biological A, we have Sophie Hayes, Claire Oglesby, and Mariah Rudolph from Chatham Early College. In our nine through 12 Biological B, we have Emmanuel Hernandez Castonado from Jordan Matthews. And in nine through 12 Chemistry, we have David Baruch Okana and Zuya Hernandez Perez, Chatham Central. And they will move on to the state. In nine through 12 Earth and Environmental, we have Anthony Santiago and Yasmin Lopez Munoz from Jordan Matthews. In nine through 12 Physics, we have Fiona Scholl, Claire Orvis, and Ellie Walker of Seaforth. And they will move on to state. In nine through 12 Technology, we have Vicky Lynn from the Chatham Early College. And nine through 12 Engineering, Kelton Fuquay from Jordan Matthews. We are very proud of our winners, and we wish all of them the best of luck at the state fair. And now we'll move on to our spelling bee. Our spelling bee was held at Chatham Central High School on February 7th. We had fifty-six spellers from across the county that participated. And at this time, I would like to recognize our top three winners. In third place, from Moncur School, we have Juliette Atlee. Juliette is in the eighth grade. In second place, from North Chatham Elementary, we have Andrew Bronden, and Andrew is in the fifth grade. And our first place winner, from George Moses Horton Middle School, we have Helen Moose. Helen is in the fifth grade. Helen will represent Chatham County Schools in the North Carolina Regional Spelling Bee at Bank of America State University, Charlotte. The regional spelling bee will be held on March 17th, so good luck to Helen, and thank you for your time.
Next one, middle school athletics, Mr. Blais.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Jackson, we're here this evening to recognize our winners from our countywide middle school cross-country meet. And we'll start out with the individual winners. For the girls, first place was Megan Leonard, second place is Maddie Putnam. Third place was Chloe Freeman from Pollard. Fourth place was Cameron Reinhardt from Pollard. Fifth place was Olivia Parker from Pollard. Sixth place is Harper Clark from Pollard. And seventh place was Gabby Gita from George Moses Horton. For the boys runners, first place, Jamison Douglas from Bennett. Second place, Will Forrester from Pollard.
Great shirt. Don't let them buy it.
Third place, Drew Yale from George Moses Horton. Fourth place, Jackson Hughes from Bennett. Fifth place, George Barté from Pollard. Sixth place, Sterling Smith from Pollard. And seventh place, Brently Shaw from JS Waters. All right, now I'm going to ask our Pollard coaches to come up, and they'll recognize their kids for the teams.
Oh, should we call in our teams? They've got to come through again.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to?
I'll go get them.
Okay.
Are you sure? Yes.
Okay. All right, and Sir Coach and our Assistant Coach, why don't you talk to the board for a minute?
Say thanks, Mr. Blais.
We could do some active stretching. Thank you so much for having the kids here. They really, really appreciate being recognized and all their hard work, that they, they, they really did a great job this year. And this is Seth Barté, one of his own. George Barté was one of our top runners, and he's our assistant coach. So this is a parent and a teacher coaching the team. And I think they're coming in. Here they are. This is our, come on in, guys. Just bringing everybody in. This is the rest of our boys varsity team. We have Zach Staggs. And Zach did really well, too. Zach came in at eighth place overall. And then we have Nick Selgman, he came in fourteenth overall. And Lucas Maker, who came in tenth. So thank you so much. Great, and that's all of our players. Thank you so much.
We are excited this evening to share with you our Yes I Can Award recipients. The Yes I Can International Awards Program was established in 1981 to celebrate the achievements of children and youth with disabilities, to encourage children and youth with disabilities to seek their highest potential. Each year, children and youth with disabilities are recognized for their accomplishments. Chatham County Schools has three students who are recognized at the state level. Ms. Sarah Self-Maddox, our Director of ECNAIG, will come and tell you a little bit more about our three students. And also, Ms. Jeanette Horton, one of our instructional program facilitators, is also here this evening to support our students.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent Jackson. It is truly a privilege to be able to be here and honor these students today.
It is truly a privilege to be able to be here and honor these students tonight. I think for all of us parents, it's easy to take for granted the opportunities our children have and the things they can access, and how often they get celebrated as they grow up. But that opportunity and access is not the same for everyone. And so it's exciting to be able to honor students and see them go on and be honored at the state level. Two of our three students are here tonight. S.J. Moody is a student at Bonley, and he is a very gifted speller. You might have seen him in the county spelling bee last year. When the day came for the school-level spelling bee, the whole school wanted him to do well, but they didn't realize how smart he was. And when he spelled grades that, spelled words that even his grade-level peers couldn't spell, the entire school was celebrating him. He placed second at the school that day. It was also a day that both students and adults realized that all students can. S.J. went on to compete at the county spelling bee and has taught students to support each other, either with words or hugs. He has shown that having a disability does not define your ability. He has proven that with love, support, and encouragement, he can and will achieve his highest potential. So, S.J.?
And I bet you can spell words I can't spell.
I'm sure he can.
Dr. Jackson will appreciate this one. We have a budding musician here. Wyatt is a musical anchor for the fourth and fifth grade band at Silk Oak School. As he has progressed through his instruction, he was demonstrating accurate performances of written music notation to his peers within the musical ensemble. He has also facilitated peer-to-peer instruction with percussionists who struggled with reading music notation. He is a wonderful human and music student, and has learned patience with those who do not catch on as quickly as he does. And he has learned how to lead from the front. He represents his school with pride and dignity, and engages himself in the learning process, and communicates when he needs additional information or demonstration. And his band teacher said that as much as Wyatt may have learned from his musical journey, we are the ones who have truly learned from him. He was saying thank you. And finally, Daniella could not be here tonight, but I want to tell you just a little bit about her. She is in Ms. Thurman's ECS class at Bonley, and she is an active member of our community, involved in two key clubs, cheerleading and student council. And despite any challenge, she has never said, "No, I can't," or "This is too hard for me." Her perseverance and resilience has inspired many students. And even though many voices are louder than her, she continues to persevere and self-advocate when she has needs. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Superintendent Jackson. I'm Chris Poston, Senior Executive Director for Excellence in Opportunity. Tonight, we're here to recognize Ms. Deanna Bowling as our Excellence in Opportunity Champion. So we got several nominations for Ms. Bowling, and her work aligns for our Excellence in Opportunity tenants. And this aligns with Strategic Plan Priority Three. Ms. Bowling works every day to reduce the predictability of who succeeds and who fails in her school. She interrupts practices that negatively impact a diverse population, and she works to cultivate the unique gifts of every student. Her nominee wrote, "Ms. Bowling is an amazing advocate for all students at Perry Harrison. She makes sure that they all have equal access to all opportunities to participate not only in class, but also in the community. She single-handedly took on a fundraising project with the PTA to make sure all of our students have new recess equipment." Congratulations, Ms. Bowling, and we appreciate all you do for Chatham County Schools.
You're late, Mr. Wood. I'm just kidding. That was payback from earlier. He told me I was late, so.
Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Jackson. As you know, each month, we select a Power of One Award recipient to be recognized during a monthly meeting. Recipients receive an award plaque and a small token of appreciation from one of our local sponsors. This award falls under our Strategic Plan Priority Three and Priority Five. It is my privilege to announce our March 2024 Power of One Award winner, Ms. Lauren Deaton, a pre-K teacher with Salar City Elementary. Her nominator said, "Lauren Deaton deserves the Power of One Award because of the dedication and enthusiasm she gives her students and parents each day. The pre-K year lays the foundation for how students and parents feel about school. This year, my student has felt seen, loved, and challenged by Ms. Lauren. This year, as a parent, I have felt supported, informed, and appreciated by Ms. Lauren. She cares about her work and her students' success and growth. She also cares about the relationships that she forms with her parents. I watch her each day greet her students and parents by name. I don't take that for granted. As we near the end of our pre-K year, I know going forward, we will be forever thankful for Ms. Lauren and all of the wonderful attributes that make her an exceptional teacher. Your March 2024 Power of One Award winner, Ms. Lauren Deaton."
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll move along to our public comment time now. Before we start, I'd like to take just a personal privilege to clear up a couple of things. At, we really appreciate comments, public comments, and we try to work with the administration, try to fix any issues or work towards taking care of any problems. At last month's meeting, and there were a couple of things that were stated in public comment that I wanted to go back and revisit just a moment. One of the things in particular referenced our supplement. And we always want to pay our teachers more. The speaker, if I understood it right, and I've tried to go back and listen again, we were, Chatham County was 50th in the state with supplements. Actually, this year, we're 12th. We have been in the top 10, but we had a couple of districts that picked up. So I wanted to clarify, and, you know, we'd love to pay our teachers a whole lot more anyway. So I just wanted to clarify that one. And the other comment was that the board has raised, has doubled Dr. Jackson's salary. The only time his salary has doubled is the first year he came to us. He worked from July through December. So the next year, his contract called for full salary. So I just wanted to make sure I was clear on that, and everybody, because I know disinformation, misinformation. Sometimes we don't, and I'm a former language arts English teacher, so I believe in checking your source and see what's true. So actually, I asked during the meeting if Dr. Jackson would check on the supplement part. He asked me not to mention the supplement, but I couldn't, I mean, his salary. But I wanted to make sure that everybody was understanding that. And so just wanted to take that moment to do that, and my apologies. I think I'm still within my three minutes, I hope, anyway. All right, and everybody's got three minutes. We've got nine speakers, so we should be in good shape. First up is Edward Walgate. Mr. Walgate?
Good evening, Dr. Jackson and members of the school board. My name is Edward Walgate, a science teacher at Northwood High School and president of the Chatham County Association of Educators, the local branch of North Carolina's Public School Staff Union, the North Carolina Association of Educators. As you're well aware, for the last fifteen years, the state legislature has been underfunding and undermining public education, and this has resulted in a staffing crisis across the state. Staff are leaving, and fewer and fewer are entering the profession. And Chatham is not immune from this, and we thank you, Dr. Jackson and school board members, for recognizing this and for considering bold steps to ensure our students have the experience and qualified educators they deserve. Chatham County Association of Educators is here today to present a petition asking county leaders to implement meaningful raises for both certified staff and classified staff, and to phase out mandatory bus driving for classified staff, which makes it hard to fill key positions. One thousand three hundred and twenty-two people have signed this petition, and some have left comments. That's four hundred Chatham staff, six hundred parents, and three hundred business owners and community members. We thank you for listening to CCAE, parents and other stakeholders, on this issue. We urge you to take steps tonight to make Chatham County the most attractive school system in the state to work for. The certified staff supplement increases being considered tonight are tremendous, and we thank you, Dr. Jackson, for proposing them. And we're hopeful that more will be done for classified staff pay moving forward. We're fortunate that Chatham County is in a position to bridge the financial gap that our legislature has put us in. We will be presenting our petition to county commissioners very soon, and we will encourage them to approve an impactful school budget later this year. Thank you once again for listening to CCAE, staff, parents, and community members. We look forward to working with you in the future in order to make Chatham County Schools even better for our students.
Thank you. Next up is John Clark, the fourth.
Good evening, I'm John Clark, a combo teacher at Chatham Grove Elementary, and I have the honor of teaching eighteen wonderful second and third graders who deserve the world, frankly. In the six years that I've taught in my career, I've seen this profession go from one that I could say I am proud to be a part of to having my eyes open to the plethora of warts and shortcomings of it. One problem that pervades all of North Carolina is the lack of competitive compensation for educators. I applaud deeply this board for the proposed supplement increase, as it is a complete necessity to attract the qualified educators for this fast-growing area. However, please know that despite where we stand at a state level, we are but a big fish in a small pond at the national level. Staffing is a huge issue here, as many colleagues, including myself, have had the honor of working in a combo grade setting, teaching two grades simultaneously. I implore this board to continue to take steps to remain competitive to ensure that my students have a qualified teacher when they leave my classroom. My second and more glaring concern is one facing the lifeblood of our children's education, the classified staff. It is beyond ridiculous that a teacher or assistant must be required to be able to drive a bus or vice versa. This has led to bus driver shortages and TA shortages that affect my students in multiple ways. This is, during some of these shortages, some students stay after school for hours until their bus is ready for them. Increasing the minimum wage for classified staff had also helped this issue. We all saw what happened when the foundation of Durham County began crumbling due to disrespectful salary policies enacted by their leadership, affecting thousands of workers' families, and my own as well. I was at those school board rallies in Durham, and I saw firsthand how impactful passion individuals can be when a cause is worth fighting for. With the knowledge of what happened in Durham and its ongoing consequences, please do not make that same mistake in disregarding the classified staff's needs. The CCAE petition centered on all these issues, and the community responded in droves with over thirteen hundred signatures. Our conversations that I had going from business to business, talking to those people, having those heartfelt conversations, their voices, their concerns, their dedication to their schools, community, their community, schools will forever be etched in my memory. I thank them wholeheartedly, and of course, I thank you guys for listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ambrosio Martinez.
Buenas tardes.
Wait one second, if you will. Now we're ready, go ahead.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon or good evening.
Mi nombre es Ambrosio Martinez.
My name is Ambrosio Martinez.
Tengo veinte años viviendo en Salar City, y tengo dos hijos.
I have, I've been living in Salar City for twenty years, and I have two kids.
Mi hija es una señora en Jordan Matthews High School.
My daughter is a senior at Jordan Matthews High School.
Y mi hijo va en octavo grado en Chatham Middle School.
And my son is in eighth grade at Chatham Middle School.
Hoy quiero tomar el tiempo para agradecerles.
Today, I want to take the time to thank you all.
La oportunidad que le han dado a mi hija en involucrar.
To take the opportunity to, um, sorry, give me a second. Uh, take the opportunity, um, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity you have given my daughter and getting her, them being involved.
Con la comunidad.
With the community.
Y proporcionar un apoyo académico para su sueño de continuar con su educación superior.
And giving her the, um, the support, the academic support for her, um, academic, giving her academic support.
A través del programa juvenil del vínculo hispano.
With the program, uh, with the Hispanic liaison program.
Orgullo latino, Latino pride.
Orgullo next pride.
In Jordan Matthews.
In Jordan Matthews.
De cual mi hijo menor.
In which my youngest son.
Ah, también participará el año que viene.
Will also participate next year.
Y tendrá la misma oportunidad.
And will have the same opportunity.
También les quiero agradecer.
I would also like to thank you all.
Por tener el equipo de interpretación.
For having the translating equipment.
Para las familias hispanas del condado.
For the Hispanic families and the county.
Que son el treinta y tres por ciento.
Which is thirty-three percent.
No es perfecto todavía.
It's not perfect yet.
Pero es el primer paso para involucrar a los padres latinos.
But it's the first step in involving Latino parents.
Nuevamente gracias por hacer posible esta oportunidad.
Again, I would like to thank you for taking, or for giving us the opportunity.
Para el estudiante de Jordan Matthews.
For the students of Jordan Matthews.
Thank you very much. Brandy Varner.
Hello. Uh, my name's, good evening, board members, Dr. Jackson. My name's Brandy Varner. I'm also a CCAE member, and I have been teaching in Chatham for seven years now, first at Perry Harrison, and now at Chatham Grove. I've taught fourth grade, I've taught third grade, and I student taught in pre-K. I loved this county from the minute I stepped in from student teaching. But unfortunately, in my time here, I've had to watch so many qualified and amazing teachers leave due to the stress or due to needing an increase in their pay supplement. And I've also had to watch so many classified staff leave and dwindle to the point where we've only had three IAs for an entire building of over six hundred students at one point. And it breaks my heart. My husband was actually one of those IAs. He couldn't drive the bus, so he ended up having to give up a job that he was really, really good at. And, you know, that makes me sad every day. But when CCA put out this petition, shared it, and got signatures, we did it with two major feelings. We did it with urgency because of what I've just spoken to, the staff shortage. We also did it with hope. Because we've seen in the past that this board and this community have been so supportive of public education. We know that you care about us. And seeing the budget proposals that Dr. Jackson came up with and that you all are considering putting for the county commissioners, we know that you have our backs, and that's important in a county. So we ask that you continue to have our backs and to support us, especially with regards to the final ask in the petition, so your salary asks are amazing. But I also ask you to please consider dissolving the dual role responsibility. At one point in time, it was a solution to help us find bus riders, but I think as the staffing, as the staffing situation has grown and evolved over the years, so should our solutions. So I ask that we work together and find a new. So I ask that we work together and find a new creative solution to fit this current climate for staffing and education. And again, I thank you for your amazing support, and I look forward to working with you all and seeing how amazing we can all be as a team.
Thank you. Jennifer Tweet.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Jackson. My name is Jennifer Tweet, and I am a member of CCAE Public School Strong and a third-grade teacher from Perry Harrison Elementary School with 16 years of experience. I am also a Chatham County Schools parent of a first and fourth grader. I am here tonight because I am concerned about the staffing issues in Chatham and its impact on students. We need bold action to address staff retention and recruitment. My school continues to carry unfilled positions every year. This is not a reflection of our school leadership or school culture. We have tried to fill open positions with subs, but sometimes when those long-term subs are out, there are no subs that are available to pick up the job. Our school is left to figure out coverage throughout the day by relying on staff members and administrators to voluntarily give up their precious planning time to cover the class with no subs. I know this is not a problem that is unique to our school or our district. Our state continues to underfund public education, so it's time for our county to do what is necessary for children. I'm always talking to my talented teacher neighbors that live in Chatham County with me and that work in nearby districts about coming to work in Chatham County Schools. The response I hear over and over is I just can't take that big of a pay cut, even if I would have a shorter commute. I also see staff members notice the larger supplement in neighboring school districts and decide then the longer drive is worth the salary increase. I remember back when I had to compete with other highly qualified teachers for a teaching position. Now we are excited when someone just considers applying. Each year, the pool of applicants continues to shrink. Our petition of 1,200-plus staff, parents, and community members have recognized the urgency of the situation and are asking you to request more from our county commissioners to address it. We ask that you vote to increase the supplement and make Chatham the most attractive county to work in the state. We should celebrate this potential increase in the teacher supplement, but our classified staff are getting very little out of this, a $500 increase to their supplement. Classified staffing issues are still a big problem when their pay still needs to be addressed. I can't remember a time when we were fully staffed with IAs. Thank you to the board members and for Dr. Jackson for listening to stakeholders such as CCAE, staff members, parents, and students. I applaud the time and consideration that Chatham County's central office and school board are putting in to make sure our students have the best education by attracting and retaining the best staff members to our county.
Thank you. Bell Boggs.
Good evening, and thank you for keeping us all so informed about the way the budget process works, as well as about your groundbreaking efforts to increase supplements for our teachers and staff members. I'm here on behalf of my 10-year-old daughter Beatrice, who is unfortunately home with strep, but who has attended many school board meetings. Enough to know you all offer candy and water to kids who get squirmy. She understands what's at stake and has even been to the legislature with me to demand more support for public schools. She wanted me to thank you and to read the statement that she wrote today. My teacher, Ms. Bearman, has been at Perry Harrison since the school opened in 1996. She is National Board certified and has a master's degree in education. Even though my class is the biggest class in the school with 29 kids, she manages to be the best teacher ever, every day. She always makes me feel better when I'm sad, and my classmates and I learn so much from her. This year, she's taught us long division, decimals, fractions, perimeter, and area. I remember one day I was feeling really frustrated with the area models, but then Ms. Bearman came to check on me, and she explained the formula to me again. I felt so much better and very relieved. She always has time for me to ask a question when I need help with something, whether that's in math, reading, science, or any subject. I know that Ms. Bearman doesn't just help me and my friends, but is a leader for other teachers in our school. No amount of money you can offer will be what Ms. Bearman and teachers like her really deserve, but Chatham County should definitely give them as much as we possibly can. By the way, her teacher has no idea that Bea wrote this, but I think it speaks to what a great job Ms. Bearman is doing in developing thoughtful, confident, engaged fourth graders. I'm grateful to her and to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Alirio Estvez or Alisio?
Alirio.
Alirio, thank you.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Jackson. I'm not wearing red today because I forgot because of the time change. But I want to tell you something. I've been a teacher for 32 years, 24 of them here in North Carolina, and I've been teaching Latino students most of the time. Something that I have learned from my students is some of them want to be teachers, but they want to help their families. And when they realize that as a teacher they don't make a lot of money, they get heartbroken. And I want to give them a chance to be teachers and to be able to help their families. I remember many of them tell me, "I just want my mama to have a good house." And we can make a dream come true if we can make them see that education is a big career, not only many money-wise, but you can be able to afford a house for your mother. That's the dream of many of my students. If we want to diversify the education, we need to make sure that everybody wants to be there, and we want minorities, Latino, black people, to be teachers. We want to increase the numbers. And I tell you, that's secret. Students, my students that I've been teaching for 24 years, love to be teachers, some of them, not all of them, would love to be teachers, but they think if I don't make enough money, how they're going to support my family? How am I going to be able to build my mama a house? And I would really like you to please consider giving them a big raise in supplement for teachers. Not for me, I'm getting old. But many young people need that money. I'm not talking on my behalf, although I will receive part of the money, and I need it because I have two children who are about to go to college. But, for those young people, I want them to see they have their future in our profession. I want them to see that our profession wants them, and this is a way to show them. And please consider, and thank you for considering increasing the supplement. And finally, now that I have 40 minutes, 40 seconds, I want you to please increase the pay for our certified staff, classified staff, excuse me. They do an incredible job. I have a few seconds, but I'm going to tell you, you know Enrique Rojas in my school, San Luis Cari Elementary, he's the head custodian, and you could see that every morning, many children go and want to see him and meet with him and talk for a while before they take breakfast. He's important to them. Many of our classified staff is important. They like being praised, but they need money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tracy Miller.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Jackson and the board, for seeing us. Chairman Gary Leonard, I'm Tracy Miller. I'm the vice president of the Chatham County Association of Educators for a little while longer. I'm also a member of Public School Strong, and I'm an AIG teacher at George Moses Horton. Been working here since 2008, and some of you know, I grew up here and went to school here. Never in my wildest nightmares could I have imagined that teachers in public schools would be villainized. Who knew that the word "mom" and the word "liberty" could be ever negatively associated, but it just happens when you least expect it? I'm here because I refuse to lose hope. We are educators, so let's teach people to be critical of the news, and just like the gospel of John said, "The truth will set you free." There are no perfect curriculums, perfect schools, principals, teachers, or even parents. My children went to school here. Do you think no one ever said things, read things, or did things that I disagreed with? I think these moments are opportunities to talk with your children, clarify your values in the context of the real world. That is everyone's work. Understand the world around you and how you fit into it. Not try to wrestle with it, but accept it and find your place in it. Public school is a beautiful thing. We learn about with and from each other. There is nothing like accredited, open to everyone, loving, accepting each and every human being that walks through the door, filled with a variety of books, experience, and voices, public school. It is the power, it is the change. The reason I'm uplifted by this petition is that it showed me that the negative voices are not the only voices. Hundreds value public schools. Hundreds of happy parents and dedicated teachers love you and love Chatham County Schools, and they support putting money where the love is. They support us, they just don't own the newspaper or serve in the legislature. I want our schools and our board and our commissioners to continue the three of the relationship that is the pride of the county and a model for the state and the nation. Thank you to the board, thank you, Dr. Jackson, thank you CCS leadership, and as we say, all y'all, for allowing staff members to speak and make budget requests collectively and directly. We're asking that you invest in us again. Draw people to Chatham County. We know they will love it when they get here. Take care of substitutes, bus drivers, custodians, hardworking people, and so many classified jobs who need and deserve more. We will be lost without them. Look at Ms. Lorraine McIntosh's hall shine so bright that you gotta shield your eyes when you walk in. We need her. Recruit and continue to value our greatest resource, our people. When friends ask me to leave Chatham and ride with them to work, get a fresh start, get some more money, I laugh in their face. And if Dr. Jackson's budget or anything near is approved, I'll be welcoming them back home to work with us.
Mercedes Garcia.
Buenas tardes a todos ustedes. Permítanme presentarme, mi nombre es Mercedes García Espitia, y quisiera compartir mi historia de vida en las escuelas de Charan Candy.
Good evening. Please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Mercedes.
Mercedes.
García Espita, and I want to share my Chatham County Schools story.
Hace 23 años llegué a Chapo Hill con una niña de siete y una adolescente de 12. Desde entonces estoy en las escuelas de Charan. Al principio fue difícil para nosotros integrarse teniendo el idioma como nuestra primera barrera, tanto para mis hijos como para nosotros de padres.
23 years ago, I arrived in Chapo Hill with a seven-year-old girl and a 12-year-old. I've been with Chatham County Schools since then. In the beginning, it was really difficult for us to integrate ourselves because language was the first obstacle for both my children and us as parents.
Hace 23 años solo contaba con una maestra de ESL. A la cual le agradezco mucho porque no solo tenía que tratar de ayudar a los niños, sino que también nos tenía que ayudar a nosotros de padres de familia, ya que ella era el único puente entre el sistema escolar y nosotros.
23 years ago, I relied only on one ESL teacher to whom I am very grateful, too, because not only did the teacher try to help the kids, but also had to help us parents as she was the only bridge between the school system and us.
Y ahora mirando hacia el pasado creo que no era suficiente, ya que ella tenía que lidiar con lo académico y emocional de nuestros hijos, y una sola maestra no era suficiente. Había tantas cosas que desconocía y que aún me faltan por conocer.
Look back in the past, that wasn't enough. She had to take care of her children's emotional and academic well-being, and only one teacher wasn't enough. There was a lot that I didn't know and I still need to learn.
Que desgraciadamente teniendo hijos brillantes e inteligentes tuve que lidiar con la frustración de mis hijos al no poder aspirar a una universidad, teniendo que conformarse con un diploma de high school.
There was a lot that I didn't know, um, sorry. Unfortunately, having barely intelligent children, I had to deal with the frustration of my kids not being able to aspire to go to university and have to conform to having a high school diploma.
Es por eso que ahora teniendo una hija en el último año de high school y nietos comenzando su educación, quiero agradecer a las escuelas de Charan Candy por todos los programas nuevos.
This is why now having a daughter in her last year of high school and grandchildren beginning their education, I would like to thank Chatham County Schools for all their new programs.
Como Avid.
Go ahead.
Así. Como Avid que impulsa a la primera generación de nuestros jóvenes a ir a la universidad.
Programs like Avid that push first-generation students to go to a university.
El programa bilingüe confirmando la importancia de leer y escribir en dos idiomas.
The dual language program confirms the importance of reading and writing in two languages.
El programa OLP, y quiero hacer énfasis en este programa.
The OLP program, and I would like to emphasize this program.
Que no solo trata de motivar a nuestros jóvenes llevándolos a conocer universidades.
Not only is it about motivating our youth by taking them to universities or touring universities.
Asistiendo a foros estudiantiles y pláticas motivacionales.
And assisting student forums and motivational speeches.
Enseñándoles que hay un sin fin de oportunidades a las que pueden aspirar.
Teaching them that there's an infinite amount of opportunities that they can aspire to.
Y trabajando en conjunto con los padres haciéndoles ver que hay una y mil maneras de poder ir a la universidad.
And by working together with parents, they can see that there are 1,000 ways to go to a university.
Desgraciadamente este programa solo está en C4 y Jordan Matthews.
Unfortunately, the program is only in C4 and Jordan Matthews.
Ojalá algún día todas tengan la oportunidad de formar parte de este programa.
I hope one day everyone has the opportunity to be part of this program.
Agradezco también a todo el personal bilingüe.
I am also thankful to all the bilingual staff.
Festivales multiculturales, clubs de artes y deportes.
Of multicultural festivals, art clubs, sports.
Y tantas actividades más que integran a nuestros padres y jóvenes.
And so many other activities that bring parents and their children together.
En una sola comunidad.
As one community.
Llena de colores y matices.
While coloring nuances.
Motivándolos no solo a tener un diploma de high school.
Motivating them to not only obtain a high school diploma.
Sino títulos universitarios, máster o doctorados.
But also bachelors, masters, and a doctorate.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll move along to information items. Item A, settlement of, let's see, pending litigation. Dr. Jackson, Mr. Mitchell.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As required by law, I am here to report to you this evening the settlement of a case. The case is entitled Berta Jordan versus Chatham County Board of Education, Middle District of North Carolina. It's case 122 CV 00012. The board has come to a settlement with Ms. Jordan, the amount of $15,000 for a full release of all claims. The settlement amount was evenly split between the North Carolina School Board's trust and the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, let's see, Dr. Moran. PLS follow-up dates, first reading. And PLS, of course, is Policies to Lead Schools, so another acronym, so.
This item is aligned and supports all of the areas of our strategic plan. The Policies to Lead the Schools is a web-based policy reference manual developed by the North Carolina School Boards Association. It provides local boards of education with a resource for up-to-date legal-compliant policies. Tonight, we have for you first reading of the fall legal updates. There are 24 policies up for revision. About half of those are minor revisions, just typos or reference annotations, but there's a folder linked for you. there were, there's a folder linked for you that has the policies that have the major changes. I'm going to outline just really quickly the seven biggest ones, in case you had any questions. Parental Involvement 1310 and Student Surveys 4720, that is just adding in the language that is in the Parents' Bill of Rights about the protected surveys. 3610 is the Counseling Program. It adds Section C, which is a new statutory requirement to have peer-to-peer student support programs in grades six and higher. 4040, Student Staff Relations and Child Abuse and Related Threats to Child Safety, 4240. That one has a Section D that reflects the duty to report and it changes the language from the state superintendent to reporting to the state board. Operation of School Nutrition Services, 6220. It adds a provision and a new requirement that prohibits the use of administrative penalties or punishment for students that have unpaid meal charges. 6401 and 7730, Ethics and the Purchasing Function and Employee Conflict of Interest. This is a new statute that requires anyone that is involved in the making or administration of contracts receive conflict of interest training, specifically a two-hour training. Is it annually or every other year, Mr. Messer? Every other year. Our district leaders and all of our principals have already had the first segment of that and as of this Wednesday, they will have their full trainings completed. Licensor 7130 has a new subsection B6 that is a provision for military spouses that are coming into North Carolina who have a license in another state and it gives them that provision that they could automatically teach here. 7510 Leave and 7520 Family and Medical Leave adds a new section about parental leave and specifically the notification requirements for that. And I think those are the major ones. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but those are the ones that had the more substantial changes in this fall update. We will be bringing this back to you next month for the final approval.
Any questions? Thank you very much. I know there's a lot, lot on to change, so, thank you. All right, we'll move to action items, I believe that's right. Yep. Heads-up document revision. Dr. Jackson, Mr. Master, Dr. Vatten, and Mr. Blythe, I think.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Chair. Good evening. If you can, Mr. Schwanke, if you'll go to the one that says the, that one, yes? So, I'm going to just kind of put a bow on our budget work session from Monday and hopefully if there are questions, we can go from there. If you'll go to the next slide, this, all of this again ties to our strategic priorities of ensuring that we put the absolute best people in front of our kids. At the end of the day, that's our call, that's our, the mantle we carry, and that's our responsibility. At its root, we have to do so within the context of the resources that we have, but also recognizing the areas where our spheres of influence and where we can make the most progress by doing such things. And so, on Monday night of last week, I provided to you updated information around our heads-up document. We give our county a heads-up every year on our pending priorities. And so, I want to be clear about a couple of things, that this is not a new process for us. If you'll go to the next slide. Over the past three years, and I will speak to those because I know them intimately, we have worked very diligently to make sure that anytime there was a way to enhance, increase any level of compensation for staff, we have done so, be they retention bonuses, the four hours program, our signs of reading signing bonuses, one and two salary cap bonuses that we, our 16-plus employees are receiving this year. We're listening to our staff to hear about the need to support those who were doing additional things outside of their classrooms by contracting our substitutes, the Bud Group by trying to fill those custodial things. Our county commissioners last year included in our budget ask a resources to continue some of the post-COVID, some of the COVID initiatives that were started. That's how we were able to keep nurses and social workers and EC staff and to fund our One Academy and to keep some of the softwares and things that our teachers needed. And our county did that. And as a result, I would say that we're so very fortunate that this year we're not having to live through some of the chaotic situations we're seeing in our region when it comes to the sunsetting of those ESRS dollars. Our finance team was very frugal, but we also worked very closely with our county commissioners. And then the state equalization supplements and even getting those. And if you'll look over in that far-right corner, you'll see where a lot of those, a lot of that additional funding came from our local fund balances. It came from our county commissioners. It came from the folk right here, which continues to give the state a pass on the adequate funding of our schools. Next slide, please. And so, at the end of the day, relationships matter. And that's important for the sake of setting the context for this conversation. Next slide, please. And so, we have three supplement options. Next slide, please, that we have placed before you. Option A, option B, option C. Each, each of those supplements will in fact increase the supplement for every licensed employee in our, our, our school system. One of the things that we've, this board and the county commissioners have had for the past three, for the past 10 years, I'm told, is a working agreement that we wanted our supplement to be in the top five and we wanted our, in the region and in the state, we wanted to be in the top 10. As we worked and waited for details, we realized that we had fallen out at the state to about number 12, but we were, and we were right at number six. Am I correct, Tony, in the region? Five, I'm sorry, in the region. And so, we began looking at what could, how could we impact those numbers? Next slide. And so, when you look at this, this next chart, you'll see that our current ranking in the first column blue is where we fell out fifth. And so, if you look at the three options that we'll have, you'll see that regardless of our, our option A with the $2,700 will make us number one, not only in the region, but probably number one in the state. Option B will make us number one in the region and probably number one in the state. Option C, that's what we put in as our original heads-up, will still get us to approximately four or five. It will increase our ranking across the state. Next slide, please. You'll also see what that, what the difference in actual dollar amounts per sector of our supplement strata will be based on the three options. So, currently, we range in supplement from A all the way to M with 26-plus years, 4,800 to 8,800. With option A, that would increase and the range would be 7,500 to 11,500. Option B would be 8,300 to 12,30. And option C, again, would be 5,200 to 9,200, all above our current situation. Next slide, please. Again, I would say options A and B will rank us number one in the region and the state. Option C, Chatham Schools will rank approximately four in the region and more than likely definitely would be in the top 10 in the state. Next slide. And so, here's the real, next slide, please. The total cost comparisons. And I want to clarify something that I heard in public comment, and I know we're not supposed to respond to those, but I do need to clean up one thing. If you'll look at the heads-up document across the top line, you see New Classified Employees' Pay Scale Adjustment. That, that's always been in the heads-up document, where our classified staff, they were the first ones at the table this year. We've been saying that for the past two years. When, when the state raised the minimum to $15 an hour, we have been talking about salary compression for the past two years and that we wanted to make sure that we addressed that. So, that 1.4 million is to adjust salaries and new pay scales for our classified staff. So, in addition to the supplement addition that we're talking about, that's, their salary, salary ranges, new salary tables will go into effect for those individuals if this is approved. So, I want to be clear about that, that those are two separate items and that that 1.4 has always been in the ask. When we look at the certified and classified, the first circle, that's the additional funding that would be required to fund option A, to fund option B, to fund option C. When you go to the next one, the next red one, Chatham County Schools' Current Expense Request, when you add all of those top numbers together, that will be what we are asking for Chatham County Schools for our general expense, current general expense. For option A, we would be requesting $5.2 million. For option B, we would be requesting $6.7 million. And for option C, we would be requesting right at $2.5 million. We are always required to include in our ask the charter school transfer, which is approximately 12%. If you go across, you'll see what the charter, the charter schools will get a portion of this, whether they need it or not, and they don't have to tell us what they do with it. So, I will say that to you, that the transfer is required by law. Then, the capital outlay appropriation request, as I've shared, for the last six years, we have not sought or received a request for capital outlay. This, these are funds that go into making sure that our buildings are well-maintained and our technology is up to date. You're going to hear a report after this about our need to refurbish our Chromebooks so that we can maintain and keep our students with the most up-to-date technology. And so, the total appropriation requested, that would be needed. When you add all that together, you see those numbers. For option A, that's $6 million, just over $6 million. For option B, $7.6 million. And for option C, it's $2.9, just under $3 million. All of that would be new money that we would be requesting. Again, those funds are a part of the county's larger budget. We are, the county, we are not their only funding priority. They have to fund schools as well as eight other counties, I mean, eight other. Agencies. Agencies, thank you. And so, I give that to you as, as hard numbers. We've done the best we can to get real numbers before you tonight so that you can in fact do that. So, those are your options. The final piece is, in addition to the 1.4 million and the revised salary scale that would correct and, and move and correct the compression that was in place, we will be asking for our classified staff to receive an additional $500 over their supplement. I want to be clear that in Chatham County, and I, I have the, the privilege of serving as the president of the North Carolina Superintendent's Association, so I had the opportunity to ask this question in a room full of superintendents. How many other districts offer their classified staff supplements? And with approximately 85 superintendents in a room in Greensboro a week ago, I could not find one. They offer bonuses, one-time bonuses, but this is a supplement that's part of their salary. So, again, I applaud you all who recognize that. We have a very unique situation here with our county commissioners. I think we have three very good options to, to deal with. Understand that there are things that are going, that there are consequences for all of the decisions that we will make. Next slide, please. And so, the following slide, next one. And so, this is what it is. Each of the options will immediately address the teacher's supplement rankings. Each will help us maintain competitiveness and attract top talent. Each of the options has unique advantages and challenges and understanding the trade-offs involved in a supplement, in the supplement adjustment. Please understand that I don't want us to, to get kind of lost thinking that just raising supplements will fill classrooms. Chapel Hill right now has the highest supplement in the state and they have vacancies. So, I want us to be honest and authentic about that. The decision should consider the financial impact of the, to the district and the county, retention and alignment aspects, ensuring sustainability, staff morale, and strategic goals. And finally, none of this will matter. None of this will matter if we're not willing to extend our advocacy to the state and federal levels for additional resources needed for long-term competitiveness. It's one thing to, to do this at home, but we all know that teacher salaries are a part of the state's responsibility and a supplement is an addition to that. And so, I will leave you there. With that, I will stop and turn that over to you, the board. I will say that as a, as, as a team, we are, want to ensure that we push forward with what can, what's possible and that our recommendation at this time would be for option A. However, that is up to you as a board to move forward. It will put us in as the top in the state and the top in the region and will in fact give us the competitive edge we are seeking and it will meet the goals that you've already set. I will await your direction. Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I'm gonna wake over here. I'm just.
I just.
See if anybody else had anything to say or comments or whatever.
You were there.
I do know you did say whatever the county you've reached out, they'll probably have to increase the tax rate. Am I correct on that?
That is the assumption at this point, that it, all three of them will require some level of increased revenue.
Is there a reason why the administration is, is going with option A over option B? I mean, is the concern that the county commissioners will just say absolutely not to be?
No, the, the, we are meeting the goal that this board has set. We, we will be number one in the, in the region and more than likely, number one in the state. And so, if that was our accomplishment, we, we did that and, but we also utilized that, that top number as well as the opportunity, if you wanted to try to exceed that, but understanding that all of it's going to require additional revenue. We wanted to have a place where we felt we could at least advocate with a level of authenticity that said we were meeting our goals and in fact exceeded the goal somewhat. The other one exceeded, you know, by, by more. So, there was, there was not a, the county has not, we, we, we have not had the detailed conversations with them at this point to say yea or nay, but we want to be, I guess, clear that our, our work was about meeting the expectations that had been laid out in terms of the being number one in the region, I mean, being in the top five in the region and number, in, in the top 10. What I challenged the board last Monday with was, do you want to be number one? And that's what option A does.
I move that the Chatham County Board of Education support the supplement proposal included in option A. Further direct staff to begin discussions with the Chatham County Board of Commissioners to determine their capacity to fund the proposal in the next budget cycle.
Second.
And a motion to second discussion.
Okay, I, I wanted to clarify a couple of things.
Okay, I wanted to clarify a couple of things myself that I heard and also even with our presentations that haven't been clear, I don't think. One is that, and Dr. Jackson mentioned it, the state, I'm just, I know some of you were at the budget session that we had last week, but the state is actually responsible for teachers' salaries. The only obligation that the county has to the school district is in services, how water, things like that, not people. So wherever county commissioners are offering supplements to school districts, they're doing it as a courtesy. It's not an obligation. Okay, so I wanted that to be really clear. And also the fact that we are, and I had heard this before the petition had circulated, and I heard it again tonight, yeah, we live in a rich county. People are individually rich.
Parts of the county, Dale, make sure we understand.
Parts of the county are individually rich. But do you want, I mean, why should they have to feel that they're being forced to do something for teachers when the state is the responsible party? So I, when I first heard about the petition, I said, oh, wow, this is great. This shows such initiative by teachers because you all got the numbers and have the, you're the most powerful force in North Carolina, and you could be. But, and you have a lot of money that's sitting in limbo that they're holding against the law, the Leandro money. Because even if you get this supplement, this is coming to you individually. This enriches your personal life. It doesn't do anything for whatever problem you're experiencing in your classroom with supplies, equipment, and that kind of thing. Am I right? Am I, you know? So if you go after the Leandro money and then you get a supplement as a gift from your county commissioners, I'd rather be in that position. So I just wanted to clarify that because I just wanted to, you know, I don't, if somebody has more than I have, I can't cover what they have. And I can't make them pay, make them subsidize something for me because of what they have. So I know it's not a responsibility, that's just my personal feeling, but I just wanted to let you know, the commissioners could still say, well, no, we can't give you that much, no, we may have to take that down a little bit. But I'll tell you one thing, if we had, and the one thing I want to make clear, we were already in these discussions before the petition surfaced. So this is, this, what we're doing now is not in response to the petition. It's in response to the relationship that we have with our county commissioners and have had over the years. The minute we submit that heads-up document, we're already working on what is our other ask going to be. So I just wanted you to be clear about that.
If someone correct me, just stand up and yell at me, but I think all five of our commissioners have said they support education. So once you say that, Dale, then you've committed to supporting education. And a good example of that is, I can't imagine Dr. Jackson's job of divvying out the teachers in the county with 65 less positions that the county pays for. Imagine your school now, two, three combination, you know? How many more combinations would we have across this county if we had 65 less positions that our commissioners are funding? I don't know numbers, but I would say proportionally, percentage-wise, of course, Wake County has more, they're nine times larger than we are, so that you can't compare. But percentage-wise, I would say I'd stack our local paid positions up to anybody. There are, there are some systems in the state, I looked at the chart, that teachers get $100 supplement. Used to be there were some systems that, none, but I think they've all got at least 100.
That's probably with the state putting in theirs, was it last year was the first year they had done that, Dr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
And the one thing, and I want to say that Dr. Jackson and Tony and his entourage back there have done a whale of a job crunching numbers and coming up with all this because this is not a, you know, it's not an easy, oh, let's just pick a number. No, it was a lot of homework done on this. And the hardest thing to deal with is that any one of the options will put us ahead of others, assuming that their boards are sitting back on their laurels. Well, I'm not going to assume that.
I read an article today, David, that Charlotte Mack was in talks with how, what they can do to some.
They're all going to do that, so, you know, and part of me understands that, you know, there are, having lived on both ends of the county and taught both ends, and there's a difference between living on one end of the county and the other. Because on one end of the county, you may have, I'm just picking a number, you may have 1,000, 2,000 acres of land. That may not mean that you have a whole lot in your pocket. And that's just, that's a reality. So I'm very well aware of any tax increase. Some people in the county may say, well, that, you know, that, okay, goes up, so what? I just, you know, my check, I just write a bigger check. It's not, that's not across the county, so we do have to consider that. And my gut feeling is, and I've said this for probably 15, 16 years since I've been on the board, why not? Why not shoot for the moon? I said the other night, why do we have to ride on other people's coattails? Why can't we be the lead Dawg, D-A-W-G, like in Georgia? Why can't we be the leader in the state? Why can't we be the one that everybody else looks up to? Because I know, having gone to conferences and stuff and talking to other board members from other systems, they're, what are y'all doing in Chatham? That's just the bottom line. That's the bottom line, you know? And they hear and they know something special here. So as much as I want to say my gut feeling is, let's shoot for the moon and go for Plan I can vote for Plan A and we're going to be right back here next year knocking on the door again. Because we can't, we can't just, we can't just stop. We can't let it, oh, gosh, the commissioners blessed us with Plan A, it's wonderful, it's wonderful. Guess what? We're coming back. Now, that's David Hamm's viewpoint. Because as soon as we do this and do that and do that, then Chapel Hill and Wake and they're going to do their thing too. And as much as we do, it may not be enough. And we may still be in that competitive battle. I'm being told to be quiet. But...
Who told you that?
No, not up here.
Oh, okay.
And if Ellen was listening, she would have said that.
Oh, okay, his wife, so we're all right, we're okay.
But I just, I'm tired of being, riding on the coattails. And we need to be the leader and we need to be the system that everybody goes ooh and ah. And I mentioned the other night, because there's some other people here that weren't here, the COVID money, the SIR funds in other systems is coming to an end.
It is for us, too.
Well, yes, but we've already, you know, Tony and company did their homework and saw what was going on, so, you know, prepared, so we're not in the news.
I think we should thank our superintendent for that.
Yes, yes.
And just to be clear, I think what that means, correct me if I'm wrong, is that no one lost a job, right? Because you were able to move, move around and make sure that they were still, had a place in Chatham County.
That is correct.
And other counties have had to fire people.
Or going to the summer anyway, yeah, yeah, that's our understanding.
And so the surrounding counties, I'll just repeat what I said the other night, the surrounding counties are going to have to fire, cut, lay off, whatever magical word you want to play with.
Acronyms RIF, I think, is it not?
Well, and the person that's being told, it's, I don't have a job anymore. So I hope they live close enough to the county lines that we can fill these positions that we have empty with those people that don't have a job anymore. So that's a, that could be, I warned Dr. Battin that, you know, I hope that comes around. So yes, I'll stop now, but I really, I'm passionate about this and I can, I can live with option A, but my heart says B.
Well, let's get to the vote in a minute, we'll hear it then, okay? Go ahead, Ms. Wilson, you got something?
Yes, thank you. So I want to add to some of what other board members have said and sharing disdain for the state legislature for not, not doing what they should do with regard to the Leandro case and share hope that they will one day recognize their constitutional duty to provide a solid education for our children in the state because it benefits everyone and, but especially our children. So in some ways, I realize they've set up this kind of educational arms race to shirk their responsibilities. At the same time, I want, and I know our other board members feel this way, our county commissioners feel this way, our administration feels this way, many of you in the room feel, that we can't let public education wither on the vine when it's under our watch and let our kids have less opportunities and to continue to grow and thrive and to be excited about school and for teachers to be excited about teaching and to be able to teach to the best of our ability to do that. And I share your star eyes for Plan B. I do think that Plan A, as I talked about this a lot and we all had a lengthy conversation last Monday about this, but just to reiterate that I think it gives our county time, because, you know, we do have poverty in some parts of the county, prices are going up a lot. So I think this gives our county time to benefit from some of the financial advantages that are coming. Some of the industries that are building haven't opened yet, as Dr. Jackson pointed out last week, and they will be opening. So I think this gives us a little bit of wiggle room for that financial growth. And I also think at the same time gets ahead of where we're going to be because we're going to grow exponentially. And I don't know how our exponential growth in Chatham County compares to the growth we've watched happen to our neighboring counties over the years, but it feels like our growth is even more exponential that's about to happen. And we're going to be opening a lot of schools in response and hiring extra teachers. And we're going to need for the word to get out that Chatham County values teachers and we want to value teachers and we want people to know we value teachers because we don't want any more of y'all having to cover when we've got shortages because I know that's extra strain and I cannot imagine how you've managed to teach and also cover other classrooms. And it's a national thing, it's not just here, and it breaks my heart for the whole country and for our whole state that, you know, some programs that can't do supplements are going to suffer. But let us be a model, let us be a model to other counties and, I guess, game on in that sense. And hopefully the legislature realizes that other counties want teachers to be paid well because despite what might show up in the news, this community, this, the people of this state truly want their kids to have a good education. I believe that in my heart and let's be the model for that. So I think A does that. So I'm grateful to the administration as well and to the superintendent for explaining it so well tonight and for everyone here who supports all of you coming out in support of public education, taking your personal time to be here, the moms that have been coming and parents have been coming. So I say, let's do it.
Brief, I promise it'll be brief. We all talk about how the state is not funding teachers correctly, but that's been going on for so long that there is a need, when you live in a county like Chatham, to take care of its own. And if the state's not going to do it, and they've proven that for 15-plus years, and the Leandro decision has been hung up in the courts for 20-plus years, and I, I hope, but I don't have high expectations with how that is going to go. And so you want to live in a county that's going to take care of its essential workers and make sure that our teachers are able to live in the same county where they come to teach. And so, of course, like everyone else, I think option B would be amazing. That is my personal preference. Because for me, it's not that it's, they're both great, but that $800 makes a difference for people. And that's what I said at the last meeting, that's what I would push for option B. I would hope that the commissioners would also see that and say, sure, I mean, option B is just anything that we can give our teachers, even $800 more. It might not sound like a lot of money, but it is. I'm just very grateful that the administration put together this proposal for us.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
I would say too that thank you all for that feedback. I do want to say something that I think might help. And that is that the one thing we have that those other communities don't have is the relationship. And it doesn't, so if we can move this and then move to, I mean, it's, we can go back. I mean, and they have always been good partners in that work. And I feel confident saying that even prior to my arrival, I can see the history of that. I don't think that, you know, they, I'm confident they're willing to hear our conversation on this. So to me, I'm just a little more bullish about, you know, where they will land and that if we can maintain the relationship, that the opportunities will continue to be there for us to do what's right. They've got a track record. Our commissioners have always done what's right, even when they didn't have the resources. This past year, I remind you that they had the largest funding request in the history of this school system, just under $5 million this school year, where there had not been an ask above 2, 2.5 million. But this current school year, they funded us an additional 4.99, whatever that was. And so I think that the fact that they're willing to even be open to have that conversation right now says that there's a solid relationship that you can build upon. If there was not, I've been in those places where you could not have this relationship, you couldn't have this conversation. The door is already closed. So I would say be open to that part of the equation, that there still will be opportunity to do some other things in the future.
Okay, we have a motion on the table for option A. And everybody sit their piece, am I correct on that? Okay. All in favor of option A with an I? Aye. Any opposed, like sign? Thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. Appreciate it, thank you, board.
Mr. Chair, I would only remind that this is a proposal.
It's an ask.
Yet, there's no race. I want to be clear, the board's decision only clarifies how much we will be requesting. We will need to communicate our needs with the county staff, will revise our funding priorities in our heads-up. priorities in our, um, heads up, uh, and we'll include this request, uh, moving forward, um, with the county. Our formal request is due to the county on May, after May first, May fifteenth, and, but I still want to challenge everyone in this room to develop a local strategy to get to Jones Street. I'm going to stop right there before I get in trouble.
I would like to turn the page and maybe look at the other side of the coin.
Is it going to take as long as your last one did? If it is, we're going to turn that coin quickly, all right? I'm just kidding. I'll let you hear Mr. Hamm a hard time, go ahead.
Between now and May first or whatever day you said, um, maybe the commissioners will come back and say, didn't y'all have a Plan B?
They could.
We've heard something about a Plan B, and you know what? That's what we want to do for y'all.
And they might do that.
And they might.
Especially if they hear that the teachers have, like, gotten together a petition saying, you know, we come with us to Raleigh, so if they assign Leandro, that might, you know, encourage them also.
And I do think, I mean, I think this is self-evident really, but the more, the commissioners will need the community's ongoing support because it takes a lot of political courage, and so, um.
Raise taxes.
Yes, and that's not an easy thing to do. So I think, and the public might need to understand even more that may not know some of the challenges that everyone is facing and why it's important and why this exponential growth impending is also important, that we get ahead of that so that we don't have empty, uh, classrooms with kids but no teachers. So we want, uh, we want to continue to help the public understand the challenges approaching and the challenges you currently face, yeah.
Okay, thank y'all very much. And please know, staff, anybody here, we appreciate the deadlines, everything you do. I'm amazed every time I go into a classroom, every time I see school letting in and out, just, just the job that you do. So we, we, we thank you for that, we appreciate that. Item B, um, let's see, technology Chromebook purchase, Mr. Swankel.
Evening Chairman Leonard, Madam Vice Chair Turner, and Dr. Jackson, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, as you know, we have a one-to-one laptop program here in the district where we make a, uh, a Chromebook laptop available to all students that want one, uh, grades A through twelve. With an eye towards making that a sustainable model, we refresh the laptops every four years in grades two, six, and nine. So when they each, at the beginning of the school year, those grades get, uh, old laptops taken up, new ones handed out. So based on the current enrollment in grades one, five, and eight, um, and then taking into account the projections for growth from ORED, uh, we landed on two thousand and fifty as the number of Chromebooks that we need to get for the next school year. We went out and asked for three quotes, or we got three quotes from, from various vendors to get two thousand and fifty, uh, new Chromebooks with, uh, accidental, accidental damage protection on them. And there you can see the three amounts, one from Dell, one from a company, CamCor, and one from CDWG. The seven hundred and sixty thousand that we have, uh, in our capital outlay funds allotted for this purchase is less than the lowest quote from Dell, um, but we, when we swap out the Chromebooks, we take our oldest ones and we're able to sell them, and we get a little bit of money for that. So, uh, by adding some of that back in, we were able to cover the, the full eight hundred thousand. So, um, there's no additional cost that we're asking for. Um, we're just here to ask for your approval on this purchase. It's already budgeted, but because of the amount, we like to make sure that you know what is being spent on and how. I would point out that, uh, the capital outlay budget that we've asked or received from the county for the last five years has not changed. And now this is the first year where we ran into a case where it didn't cover the full amount that we needed to buy the Chromebooks, and like I said, we had the money, um, but we may need to consider looking at that ask for future years, uh, as we continue to grow.
It's been the same for three years?
Yeah.
Forever.
Three years. I understand, okay.
In what you just approved, there is an increase being requested for next year.
Okay.
Small, five percent.
I move that Chatham County Board of Education approve the Dell Chromebook computer purchases presented.
Got a motion, a second, any questions, any discussion for Mr. Swankel?
Just congratulations on selling those extra Chromebooks to make up the difference. Is all the ones.
I did have, no, I'm just joking.
Okay. All in favor of Ms. Turner's motion with an aye, please? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Item C, social media litigation. Uh, let's see, that says me, but I will turn it over to Mr. Mitchell or Dr.?
Mr. Mitchell.
Okay.
All right, um, so board members, just to be clear, and I know you already know this, this is not our case. Tharrington Smith is, is just assisting with coordinating between the board and a group of lawyers who are bringing litigation across the country against Meta, ByteDance, which is TikTok, Snap, Google, and other defendants for damages arising out of the social media companies' products and conduct associated with the youth mental health crisis. And so, uh, a number of school systems are considering and joining these, these lawsuits. There is zero cost to the school district, it is a contingent fee arrangement, which means that the lawyers will only get paid if there's recovery, they would get a percentage of that, but there will never be any cost or fees if there is not a recovery. I've confirmed that a representative from the, the plaintiff's lawyer's team can be available at your next open session to give a more in-depth presentation because, again, it's their case, not ours. But it's my understanding that the board, uh, wishes to consider this evening, uh, joining the case and authorizing, entering, entering into a retainer agreement with the law firms. And so if it's the board's pleasure, it would be a motion to join the litigation, uh, against the social media companies and to enter into the retainer agreement, and I'm going to read a bunch of names because it's the name of the law firms, I just have to do it. Uh, it is Baird, Mandalas, Brockstead, and Federico LLC, Ward Black Law, and Leaf, Cabrazer, Hyman, and Bernstein LLP. So again, it's a motion to join the litigation and to enter into the retainer agreement with the law firms that I just indicated.
Second.
I don't, well, I don't get to make the motion.
I take, I take that as a motion.
So, so moved.
Second.
All right, and when he says retainer agreement, repeat again, if you will, Adam.
Yes, so that, so all, that means that those firms are the district's lawyer, for the lawyers for the purposes of this litigation, but unlike a traditional law firm which charges by the hour or by the case, this is a strictly contingent fee arrangement, which again means that there's zero cost to the board unless there's a recovery, in which case the lawyers will get a percentage of that. So the retainer agreement is to retain them, it's not to pay them, they only get paid if there's a recovery.
Any questions from the board? We have a motion and a second on that, so it might have been out of order, but it's okay. Any questions? All in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, like sign? Thank you, okay. Our next meeting is, uh, Monday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at five thirty here. You'll have a motion to adjourn.
Same motion.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Thank you, thank y'all all very much.
Mike, it was nice to meet your daughter. Very cute.
We still have a fund, don't we, that helps people get a CDL license if they want to be a bus driver?
My daughter was one of the science fair state winners. She's going to the state.
Really?
She's a state winner, yeah, but she's going.
Congrats! Yay! That's so exciting!
Yeah. She's in fifth grade, she's seen her, um, her partner Catherine, uh, whined at the regionals and going to the state fair in two weeks.
What, what was her?
She, they measured air quality at Chatham Grove. They took one of my husband's extra air quality, like CO2 monitors, and stood in the carpool line with the cafeteria, setting up a classroom all day to look and see.
Now, NC State, when?
March twenty-third, which I think is Saturday, like two, two Saturdays.